Under our next heading for visitors, I have asked that both sides of the Indian mascot name, please, I asked that both sides submit me two to three names, both sides have done that. We're going to give you a few minutes. John Moody is going to keep time, just so that we can get the board as open. The superintendent does intend to review the first status quo budget tonight with the board, so we'd like to move on and do that. So, that said, I have a list here, and I have alternated each side. Please come up, tell us your name, and...
About three minutes.
About three minutes. So, the first one I have written down is Zach Hyden, and I apologize if I'm saying the name's wrong.
So, they're exactly right. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Zach Hyden, I'm the legal director at the ACLU of Maine. We are a statewide organization devoted to protecting the civil rights and civil liberties of the people of Maine. We're part of the American Civil Liberties Union nationwide organization with over 1.5 million members around this country. And on behalf of our members here in Maine, I'm here tonight to ask you to retire the mascot. I spoke with you at the last larger gathering a few months ago, and observed for you that this is the last mascot, the last Native American mascot in use in schools in Maine. There were nine schools that were using Native mascots, then there were seven, then there were five, then there were two, and now there is just one, just this one. And if you decide to retire this mascot, Maine will be the first state in the country to have completely gotten rid of these mascots, which are so offensive and so harmful to people across the state, including especially our tribal brothers and sisters. So, I hope you will embrace that opportunity. But I wasn't asked to come here to speak about history, I was asked to come here because I'm a lawyer, and wanted to talk to you a little bit about the law. Now, I know you have, as a school district, you have lawyers of your own, you're very ably represented by lawyers, and so I'm probably not telling you anything that they haven't already told you. What they've probably told you is that there are state civil rights laws and federal civil rights laws that govern education, that cover schools, and that they prohibit racism by schools, discrimination by schools on the basis of ethnicity, or sex, or religion, state laws and federal laws. In Maine, that collection of laws are known as the Maine Human Rights Act, and they're governed by the statutes and enforced by the Maine Human Rights Commission. And those prohibit discriminatory actions by schools that create a hostile school environment. Similarly, the federal civil rights law that governs education, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act prohibits the creation of hostile school environments. So, whatever else your lawyers have told you about those laws and litigation under those laws, they may have said, "You will be able to defend this mascot if it goes to court." They may have told you, "You're not going to be able to defend the mascot if it goes to court." But the one thing I know that your lawyers will tell you is that it's going to be very expensive, very time-consuming, very resource-intensive, very burdensome for this school district if people who feel that they've been injured by this mascot decide that they want to take the school district to court. So, I hope you'll avoid that, and thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hyden.
Thank you.
Next on my list tonight is Nicole Luschakow.
Hello. Good evening. As I'm planning on reading, I'm going to read a little bit, so I'm not feeling well. I was trying to think of what to say, and I didn't want to say the same old things that have been said over the past two months, and I didn't want to comment on all the rhetoric that's been kind of going through the airwaves and media and such. I simply want to acknowledge that this has been exhausting, I think, for everyone. Myself, I've been disheartened at how long this has carried on. When I first got involved with this, I didn't even realize it would come to what it has. It's amazing. But at the end of the day, we all have to decide if we're going to have a town that no longer represents Indians. I've spoken with some people that were from Western Mass that lost their native name and logo last year around this time, and they've said that everything that was Native American about that community has actually become stripped away. Whether or not it was that people had a bad taste left in their mouth after what occurred, everything that that stood for has slowly faded. I think that's something we need to think about. You know, the, let's see. The reality is of what, you know, losing an Indian name and, yeah. So, I mean, I feel like we're the ones that have been keeping the Native spirit alive in this community, and I just, are we prepared to say goodbye to that? We have to ask ourselves that question. I don't think it's about whether we're being racist, I think all of us that know that we want to keep the name, it's for positive reasons, you know, as far as the heritage and the history and what, how we honor Native Americans. It's just being turned into something hateful that really shouldn't even be called into question. Just in ending, I brought up at the forum about where this is all going in terms of political correctness and all this, and I mentioned about the Pledge of Allegiance and one day taking out the "in God" part, and for those that don't believe in God and that's not compelling enough, I thought about, I was at the girls' and boys' basketball game when they were trying to get into the state championships, and they mentioned, you know, the Skowhegan Indians, and when I heard that, I liked it. And initially before that, I kind of thought, I'm like, "Do we really need to have sports teams named Indians?" But when I heard it, I thought about the heritage, I thought about the culture, I thought about what it meant to be from this area. If we change that, no one's going to think about Indians at all, it's not going to happen. So, and I thought about the other team, that there was a mascot of a dog, and they're called a specific breed. And this, as ridiculous as this seems, I just think, where is this going to? Is there going to be a point in history that we actually say, "We didn't ask the dog for permission to be a mascot, we didn't ask the dog if we could, like, use them," and like, of course, Native Americans, there's so much more. Am I done? Is it finished? Okay.
Thank you so much. Next on my list is Lisa Savage.
Lisa Savage, I live in Solon, I'm a taxpayer here in Skowhegan, property owner. I am tired of the mascot, I'm tired of coming to the Skowhegan School Board meetings, and I'm worried that the school board is unable to conduct your regular business of educating children because of spending so much time on this issue. I think it's pretty clear by now, it's not going away until the team name is changed, and so, I would like to urge you to spend the legal fees on something else educational and to realize that it's an idea that whose time has come, and the mascot team name has not aged well. There's no dishonor in learning and moving forward and being a changer, and I hope on behalf of the taxpayers that this can happen soon and that we can get back to the business of focusing on education. Thank you for listening.
Next on my list to speak tonight is Kathy Lebrun.
This is hard for me, I don't like speaking in front of people, but, really, me too. My name is Kathy Lebrun, I'm a resident of Skowhegan, I'm also a member of the Pasmaquoddy tribe, I hold a tribal card, I'm on the census. I moved to Skowhegan in eighth grade from Melanocca, my children and one of my granddaughters attended high school. Neither of my kids or my mom, who is full-blood of Pasmaquoddy, are offended by the name or the image being used. I have one relative who doesn't care either way whether we keep it or we don't. My mom talked to one of my aunts a few weeks ago, she asked her if she was offended, and she had no idea that this was even being brought up again. She thought it was already settled. She isn't offended, and she doesn't feel disrespected, and it doesn't matter to her either way whether we keep the name or not. This aunt's opinion matters the most to me, I'm closest to her. I spent a lot of time in the summers in Princeton on the reservation with four of my aunts, one of my uncles, and two of my cousins, I grew up with them. My mom comes from a family of 16 kids, and these are the ones that I spend the most time with, they're my age. When I was in high school in the eighties, my grandmother, Pauline Stevens, thought our Skowhegan Indian jackets were cool, she said she'd love to have one. I'm here to say that the Penobscot ambassador does not speak for me or all of us. Skowhegan doesn't have a mascot anymore, so I don't know why they keep using the word mascot. Most of us are not offended by the Indian name, the respectful R around town, the Indian statue, or school seal in the gymnasium. To say most natives are offended is simply not true. The truth is, most of us have never been asked. Not one person in my family has said anything, so my mother and I, we spoke to some of them to see if they felt offended or disrespected, and nobody did. Some of them said they didn't care either way. So, I ask you again, because I sent all of you a letter before, about what my mother and I both thought of this, to add more Native American history of the Maine tribes in the school, and please keep the Indian name and image, remember, my ancestors don't like them out again. Thank you.
Next on my list to speak tonight is Mal.
Before my time starts, I'm just going to give you these letters, they're from the Students for Democratic Socialism Association. I feel like I'm at a wedding, how this room is. I brought note cards, so hopefully I stay within your time this time. Thank you for letting me be here again, I really appreciate it. Months ago, I stood here and reopened this issue years after this body upheld the racist mascot in 2015. In the years that followed that vote, Skowhegan Indian pride grew in numbers and in perceived power and felt a sense of security in the 2015 vote. Incidents like the scalp towel, the hunt the Indian business promotion, the racist attitudes and behavior on social media, and the Columbus Day rally for Indian pride have been an embarrassment to this town and all point back to the Indian mascot being a source of racism, bigotry, and dishonor to the indigenous nations of Maine. We all have united on this issue as tribes, and you have heard from members of the Micmac, Pasmaquoddy, Malasit, and Penobscot people in leadership positions, as well as indigenous maters from other nations about how your mascot causes us harm and perpetuates the historical oppression and mistreatment of our people. It does not educate about us, and it has passed the time to eradicate this outdated and problematic practice of stealing another group's cultural identity and flying in the face of our respectful request that you stop doing so. I have sent you all a report released by the National Congress of American Indians, developed and presented by Dr. Michael Friedman. This report was commissioned in the fight to remove the Redskins mascot in Washington, DC because of it being a racial slur. The report has a collection of factual findings that are validated by professional organizations and experts, not Native American Guardians Association, which is an expert in nothing but looking ridiculous. I encourage you all to review the entire report, and I have brought some of the passages here this evening. Studies have shown that the presence of Native American mascots result in directly lowering the self-esteem and the lower mood among both Native American and non-Native American adolescents and young adults, as well as increased negative attitudes towards Native Americans among non-Native Americans, as you can hear from the people behind me. Regardless of whether the mascots are considered offensive, they have been found to be harmful. Further studies have shown that discrimination in the form of racial slurs, harassment, and bullying is associated with poor mental health among Native American children and adults. This has manifested itself in the form of elevated levels of depression, suicide, substance abuse, increased physical pain, and maladaptive health behaviors among Native American children and adults in the United States. Native Americans have the highest levels of psychological distress of any group, as well as alarmingly high rates of post-traumatic stress disorder. These mascots cause actual harm by dehumanizing us and perpetuating stereotypes about our history and cultural identity. And I have a lot more than I might not get to because I have a time constraint, but I want you all to know that it's your job as board members to provide a safe learning environment for your children, and you are derelict in that duty if you keep this mascot. You have a chance to do the right thing. Martin Luther King said, "It's always the right time to do the right thing," and the time for your mascot is up. Thank you.
And lastly tonight, our speaker was Sean Coria.
Good evening. I'm Sean Coria, resident of Skowhegan, and I'd like to submit these copies of research data, and not just my testimony, but also articles of fact. The APA report, the Freyberg study, is heavily referenced in this debate. Whether or not you've taken an opportunity to read this full report, there are some important points to understand. One, the study is not validated by an APA psychologist. In fact, the APA president at the time was the one and only non-psychologist ever to sit as president. The Freyberg actually suggests two fixes to her so-called problem. Remove all mascots, number one. Have more imagery and names, number two. The APA has also cited in approved study details that a school can keep their mascot if they expand the use of native image and displays to allow native students a wider opportunity to explore their potential future selves. Number three, Freyberg clearly states the difference between a logo and a mascot. Freyberg states that mascots are not inherently harmful. Freyberg never demonstrates mascots to be the cause of impact. It only relates to causes such as alcohol and drug abuse. There's a huge difference. Her research also shows that the majority of society prefers Native American imagery association over any other variation, such as the fighting Irish. She then states that it is due to racism that provides no research to validate the statement. In closing, all studies look at, excuse me, all, in all studies look at our own school district. Preliminary state reports show that students in our district that identify as Native American perform academically better than other students. Our name is not hindering the academic progress of our student body. And now that the can of worms has been opened, as far as anyone stating that there's been any type of harmful academics, an environment that's harmful to our students or our community, how is it that the people that are looking for change will continually harass, try, and degrade anybody that is in a difference of their opinion? We can go, we can go into this, we can go into this deeper, but again, let's put the true face of what's going on here, here, so that there's no, no way anyone can even say that our name is hindering any of the academic progress of our students. Let's maintain our name, let's maintain our community, let's stand tall. Let people know, we will not be bullied, we will not be threatened, because that's what's happening.
Yes, all those in favor of accepting these minutes? All those opposed? Any extensions? See none, sorry. We can leave.
First off, to me, Madam February 7, 2019, Bruce Mottner, principal of Skowhegan Area High School. Bruce reviewed his goals for 2018 and 2019. Goal one, establish a positive cultural climate at SAHS. Goal two, work to implement a dual system of reporting at SAHS. Goal three, continue work with supervision and evaluation of staff at SAHS utilizing the MSAD 54 PEPG teacher evaluation system. Goal number four, attend professional development opportunities with a focus on content standards, assessments, and other related topics. Bruce reviewed the work being done with the Future Search, which is moving into year two to three, see attached. Bruce reviewed Academic and Havics of Work, HOW, honorable data. Seventy-three percent of total students made the HOW honor roll as compared with 40% of students making the academic honor roll, see attached. New course offerings for 2019-2020 include business technology, intrasport management, and street law, science, chemical genetics, biochemistry, forensic science, and animal behavior, social studies, war and conflict, culture and society, history of technology and revolutions, applied arts, upcycled art, replacing fiber art, English, advanced theater and advanced speech, math, functions, statistics, and trigonometry, SATC job skills. Bruce reviewed the online table of contents available to students and parents that contains information about all aspects of SAHS. Bruce reviewed programs to support students, including the high school's CSI intervention block, the freshman VARR program, and summer and winter school for students who are behind. He also shared the plan to offer advanced courses to students over the summer. Bruce discussed collaboration between the high school, the adult education program, and SATC, as well as ongoing collaboration with the John T. Gorman Foundation. This work is centered on school, community, state, and national resources to connect our students to careers that can benefit themselves as well as the community. Bruce thanked the board for all its support, the committee thanked Bruce for his staff and all their areas well.
Thank you, Teresa. Are there any questions for Teresa? None? We'll move on to the senior report of the Education Policy Program Committee of February 12, 2019, Dr. Ben and Goff. Richard, I'm sorry, Richard. All those in favor?
Presentation of Sam, Skowhegan Area Middle School Coding Club. Skowhegan Area Middle School teacher Scott Foxworth present a plan to create a coding club that would offer middle school students a chance to explore what coding is all about. With the support of Principal Longyear, the club will begin after February 8th and will run prior to the start of the spring sports season. Recommendation, that the board approve the establishment of the coding club at Skowhegan Area Middle School to begin after February 8th.
Looking for a motion to accept that recommendation from Jeanne, seconded by Teresa. All those in favor? All those opposed? Are there any extensions? See none? Any discussion?
MSAD 54 data review. Mr. Moody shared an overview of results from the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey 2017, MIYHS, and Gallup 2018 surveys done in grades 6 to 12. Legislative review. Mr. Colvery and Mr. Moody updated the committee on some of the proposed legislation before the 129th legislature that pertains to schools. Four, professional development and curriculum update. As a result of the board vote to move the scheduled March workshop to the end of the school year, which made March 11th a student day, the committee tabled the professional development curriculum update until a further needed. Five, future EP/PC items, budget presentation, foreign exchange deals, additional policy reviews, state testing data, professional development, and personal management.
Teresa, are there any questions for Teresa? Any questions? See anybody standing? Superintendent's report.
So, the items, the first item is the title of the board's determination, the next steps in the process, address the community, make matters by this issue. You put that on, like, this all-day chair, basically as a way to update the community, but where is the board in this process?
I make a motion that, we've done this, we've hashed this over, like the lady says, we've got a job to do. I make a motion that we don't take any action, no further discussion unless legislation mandates
I can get behind that.
Can I finish first, or do you want to, you want to lead? Really, the intent of this meeting tonight was not to take an action, but you certainly as a board could choose to do that, I guess. The thought behind this was that we would, we've had a public hearing, people expressed interest in this topic coming to the meetings. We had a forum where people could speak. You folks raised a bunch of questions, you folks wanted to know what your attorneys' view of that was. We met with your attorneys a few weeks ago at the executive session to talk about those things, because I think a lot of questions were clarified, a lot from the legal side. And then that said, so then they begged the question of what happens next. So, this was an attempt tonight to say, not to actually take a vote, because we really hadn't advertised the fact that we were going to. The idea was to have an opportunity to, at least my vision was, my recommendation would have been to you, was to set a date, within the next, in the month of March, where you would advertise the fact that you folks would indeed take some action. Because also, because there's a lot of people expressing here that this is going to carry on, it does detract from the work of the board. So, my thought was, is that, and also in talking to you folks, like, also, it's been said to me by numbers of you, is that you've been very patient in listening to people on both sides of this issue for several months, but you yourselves have not had an opportunity to have a dialogue about this topic yourself. So, my recommendation would have been, is that you set a date sometime within the next two or three weeks, where you would, the board could enter into a workshop session here in public, people could listen, where you folks could talk a little bit about what your, what your thoughts are, and then out of that would come whatever motions that you want to do. And then people would know in advance that that's what you're trying to do, you folks have a chance to express yourself if you want to, you don't have to, you don't want to. That made sense to me, I worked very hard here, tried to create a process that's open and fair and equitable to all parties. And I just think this was the next logical step, but you're the board. So, if you folks want to do something different than that, but I think I would, I would urge you, I'm just flat, I'll tell you, I would urge you to follow my recommendation, you don't have to do that, but, so that was my thought here, was that you folks tonight would say, embrace some kind of direction about either what I suggested or some variation on that, and then so, I mean, you leave here tonight, the world will know what your, what your next step is. That's why we put "next steps." And I, in fairness too, I think, given the heightened interest in people following all this, I think it would be, I think it would be only right to give people notice that that's when you plan to really take a vote on something or take action, rather than just at a time when you, people don't have that opportunity to know that. That's my view, whatever you folks want to do, but that would be, that would be my recommendation.
I would second that. So, what does the board wish to do?
Was there a motion on the table now, Dixie?
There was a, but there was a motion.
And what's that?
Would you folks withdraw that or? Would you folks withdraw that, or no?
I would withdraw.
And I would, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We've got a budget.
We do, and that's why. And I'm glad you said that, I'm glad you said that, Hal, is because, you know, really important point, is, I mean, tonight's meeting, we're not, this is not our usual budget night, I mean, board night, we usually meet on the first and third. We picked this night out of sequence so we could work on the budget. So, which we tend to do tonight. And so, this, we put this into this meeting thinking we could spend half an hour, or twenty, or so on, and a lot of people know where we're at, and we could move on with the budget process. And then you could set a night in two or three weeks, where, whatever you want, where people would know, we devoted to that, it would be the only issue you'd want to talk about, and then we could, you could, there is a need to move on. There is, as you know, you've got a schedule in your packet of all, your meeting, this is, these are the budget schedules. So the month of March, these folks meet twice a week, constantly, so they can't, they've got to have time to do that work. And we're almost a month behind on the budget process, but we really put this in front of that, so we need to get at it. So, anyway, so that's a good point, Sam.
So the motion on the floor and the second have been rescinded. So, when is our next board meeting?
We, we tentatively, we, because we're having this meeting on the twenty-eighth, we had not scheduled one for next, the next week, on the seventh. So our next regularly scheduled board meeting is the twenty-first.
Why aren't we reading next Thursday?
We had left it, we had not scheduled one, because this, this meeting's only one week from that, so we, so you could meet next Thursday, if you want to, it's up to you. We had tentatively thought we would do is try to use the seventh as a support services budget workshop, because they, they...
You don't even have, like, support services is not listed as having a meeting next week?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Where? Where? On this, in your file?
What?
Only one person talked at five.
Can we just back up a minute? I mean, we decided not to meet over vacation, laughing to a man last couple. We decided to have that meeting tonight. And that puts us only one week away from you normally have your next meeting. So there was some discussion when we made that decision a few weeks ago, about whether or not we'd meet on the seventh or not, depending on where we went. I'm saying we could meet on the seventh, but I'm not sure you need to, because you could, you could meet on, you're going to, your schedule to be on the twenty-first anyway. We had, if we didn't meet on the seventh for a board meeting, we had put in a support services workshop to work on the budget, that's what's on the, that's what's on the calendar. So, if you chose not, if you chose to meet next week for the board, you wouldn't have those, you would not have the support services workshop, we have to reschedule that.
I can answer a question.
Yeah.
Would it seem logical to have the workshop for this issue next week?
You could, if you're ready to do it that soon.
Have our workshop, have our discussion, and whatever else is going to happen, happen.
Close the world.
No, it's open, you can't, you have to mean public.
It has to be in a public meeting.
What you can do is have a workshop within the meeting, so, which means, this circle closes, you can have a conversation in front of the public, and then we come out of that, and then take whatever actions you might want to take. You could do that, if you think you're ready to do that in a week. That's up, that's up.
I mean, that's my thought on it, but what, what does, what do you, I'll think, I assume we get this behind us, the better.
All of the motion.
Are we looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, that's the one motion we could do.
Do you think there's a motion to have the workshop next Thursday, September? I said.
It's been first and seconded by Desiree and Jeanne Conley. All those in favor have?
Any discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion?
I have a question. Is this the time to discuss the parameters of that, or just to discuss what are we doing?
Could be the next thing.
We can bring that up after we, after we decide whether or not. So, okay, is there any other discussion on this motion?
We're talking meeting at seven o'clock, as, for a reward time, following the support services meeting?
You'd have to be seven, we would never support services meeting if you have the board meeting.
Wow.
Because there's not, because the auditors are coming on, it's six o'clock on the seventh, so that's already taken. You would not have a support services meeting on the seventh. At six o'clock, the finance, we put the auditors on, they're meeting at seven, at six o'clock, with finance.
So, but another date can be, can happen.
We can reschedule the support services meeting.
So, on that motion, which would be next, is going to be saved a date?
Thursday, seven.
Thursdays at?
Seventh.
The seventh, March seventh. At seven, here at the school, to have our workshop, and then take whatever action we're going to take on this issue.
So you really be able, you'd be a board meeting, where you'd have a workshop as part of it, then you come back out of that, the board meeting?
Makes sense to me to have, since there is no regular school board meeting scheduled that we do it on a night when we don't have a bunch of other stuff to do.
Correct, correct.
Is everybody with me on that?
Yes.
Okay. Todd?
What's the goal of the discussion?
The, the, the concept behind it is that many of you have said to me, that you have listened to everybody that wants to speak, but the board has never had an opportunity to express its own individual people, express their own thoughts. So, that could simply be there, we go around the table, and everybody just gets a couple of minutes to express their thoughts, if they wish, or not. And it could, and it could go from, they have some dialogue about that, or even debate, you could have some dialogue, or you come out, or have none.
One of the things that I've always enjoyed of this board is that most of the time, even though sometimes we don't always agree, at some point we can resolve and still be okay with, with working with each other. That's called being a grown-up, by the way. So, is there any other discussion on that motion to hold the meeting next week? None? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Richard, did you want to say something?
Yeah. I think we've got to stick to our schedule here on the budget, which we're, we're behind on the budget as it is. This is going to put us another week behind. It'll be July before we get the budget done.
We'll get it done. So a vote on that, all those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Do you need to be, of these weighted votes?
It's always weighted.
Do you need to count them?
We need to, who's the yeses, who's the noes?
All those in favor of having the meeting next week?
Having a meeting next week?
On the, on the seventh.
On the seventh.
The, the, our workshop, our, thank you.
So the support staff, support services meeting, is going to put up?
That would be not happening. For those of you who don't know, why, we're counting, we're counting votes, but this is a weighted vote, a way, this works, each, each, each town's member has a different weight, debatulation, we have to count the names, and then wait, count the votes.
Can't put your two hands up there.
Oh, sorry.
Stop being a kid.
It's sick, and then you have this.
I can't be there.
We got it.
Got it? All those opposed to the workshop and something next week, raise your hand. If you are opposed to the motion, raise your hand. Jeez, I think that was easy. Are there, are there any extensions? One more? We have to have a vote.
Maybe, because, it's a majority. The motion passed.
So next week, seven o'clock, folks, you're sitting in the audience, the meeting will be next week, and we open to the public, seven o'clock here at the campus.